Interesting. Two days so far. We wrangled, they're saying we're not going to have it for more. So it's been a fun day. All our firefighters were out and emergency personnel, EMS and everybody. So I just want to thank all of them for everything that they're doing to help the public.
Absolutely. Again, this is a one trying. You never know when a storm or an emergency is going to come by. It's all working together, that collaborative effort from 911 for emergency management, to the first responders, to the electric crew, you know, to, you know, make sure the quality of the electric comes back on and helps. So again, great job. Thank you.
Okay, public comment?
Jeff, Uncle Pala Alto. First, I got to wish you a happy Valentine's Day, Larry.
Thank you.
Just touching on what you guys did said, 911 center first responders. Last I knew, there were well over a thousand calls just yesterday alone for 911 centers. So hats off to those men and women, also first responders. I know our company was out at five o'clock in the morning most of the day. Your maintenance crew here did a fantastic job. They're still out actually doing stuff. But 911 center, again, 28 overtime shifts this week. You've got to get those people help. That was a hell of a day they put in yesterday. 28 overtime shifts is just... One little visit down there by Boots is not going to suffice and make things better. You've got to get them help down there. They're struggling. And it's long hours. They're missing family time and everything else. So hopefully you guys can do something about that. A couple of weeks ago, I asked who all has police radios through an email. Fell on deaf ears, never got an answer. I'd like to know who has those radios in the county, in this courthouse specifically. Also, I sent one about badge access. It's a major threat to have just random people in the public have access to this courthouse any day, time, whenever they want to get in. So I requested a list of who has badge access. I'd like one myself. I'm doing title searches and deep research. I'd like to come into it whenever I want. So I'd like some more information on that. Larry, you talked to Rudy. I talked to Joe myself. And he said that it's HR that issues them. He's just in charge of overseeing them. So hopefully we can get an answer there on why the random public has badge access. Also, the CARES Act and ARCA funds, when are we going to release a statement on those? What are we spending on? What is planned to spend it on? How much is left? I know you've been asking, both of you just have been asking. But if you remember, Gary, back in the beginning, it took me nine months fighting every week to get an answer on the CARES Act funds until Boots finally released where it went. So hopefully we're not going down that road again, let the public know where the money's at. And lastly, was there ever an internal investigation done with this Jamesville Five incident? It's the newest one.
Okay.
There was one done for the other one, so I'm just trying to figure out. I mean, there were several people inside this building in this administration that were well aware of Georgia's predatory ways and was aware that this was going on. I mean, I came to the meeting on July 14th and said about him being here after hours, my living consent decree, which was a major violation, and then this happens. So I'd like to know why, if there was one, where is it? What was the determination of it? This is multiple violations of the consent decree, multiple sexual harassment and assault. Why is it not being handled? Gary Bender, you're the person for the consent decree. You're overseeing this while all these are happening. Any CEO of any company, you want to run this place like a company.
That's time.
Any CEO would be fired.
That's time.
So I think it's time for you to resign. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, before I state what I want to state, I just want to comment on what you and Jeff have already said about the EMTs. There was a thing for...
George, just state your name.
Yeah, but I don't want this to go off on my time. I'm just commenting on what they have already said.
Your time started.
This is what you know. Okay. George St. Colwich, Palio Alto. I got a call. I kept on calling PPNL, finding out what's going on. But what I wanted to say is they had an emergency set up over in Montcarver, the Montcarver Fire Company. And I'll tell you what, that chief, fire chief commissioner, he's a great guy. I'll tell you what. He told my wife and I, if we want to stay overnight, he'd stay there with us. That is what it's all about. And these EMTs and other ones, police department, they are the ones that are looking out and they are sacrificing their eyes for people like us. It was wonderful, you know? To get somebody out like my wife, she has anxiety, to get her to go anywhere for help or anything like that, it's like pulling teeth. And I got her to go. For three hours, we were over there. And not only that, we were the only two people that came in. But they still stayed. They treated us so nicely. I want to really recommend to anybody to give that guy a great, great, you know, appreciation. And then the gentleman that, oh, I can't remember his name. He lives across the street that says, you know, in Montcarver. Well, who comes in but Fox 56? So once again, they wanted me to give my name and put on, I said, no. I'm giving enough headaches and nightmares to politicians already. If they see my name, if they see my name or see my picture, they're going to have a heart attack. And I'm telling you what, the girl was so nice, Alicia, her name was, 56. I was the person that was blacked out, but my voice was on TV. And I was just saying about how, I know PPNL is doing it the best they can, but this is a ridiculous thing. There's so many townships right connected with each other. Palio Alto, Fort Carver, Mechanicsville, Newtville, all these people without heat. Now, what I've been preaching about homeless people, I just went through it for one day. One day, and I'm still going through it, but one day, and I'm ready to pull my hair out. These people are losing their homes. This is what it's all about. I want politicians, the ones that are given a hard time not to do something about this, to live in that kind of condition. I guarantee you, all them are nice and cozy in their homes. And I don't mind that, but what I mind is not taking care of the United States citizens that paid into the process, played a fair game, paid what they were supposed to pay. Veterans, and they're out there in the streets each and every day. And then they were praying, praying for the people that were going to go out and act and see who they were. They just had to pray for warm weather for those people to go out, go out in this type of weather and see what the people go through. Thank you.
George, just quickly, did Dave Marlowe's office call you?
Yes, he did. Josh, Josh from Harrisburg, and I want to thank you for that. He's going to look into the property scissors. He never heard of such a thing, that only three companies can do a reassessment in Pennsylvania. And I was told two, but now I've heard three were given bids in, but only two were accepted.
So did you send up the meeting then?
Oh, well, he said anytime I want to call or go to Senator Arco's office to bring up. And he took every information that I had, and I appreciate, Larry, what you did.
You're welcome.
And Boots and we had the meeting over in his office.
Okay, but just let me know how good the meeting was.
Okay, thank you very much. That I want to thank.
You're welcome. Any other public comment?
Morning.
Morning.
Greg Wolfsburg, so, what I want to bring up is, I emailed all three commissioners last week. I'm not sure if you've seen that email. We sent it on Monday, because I wasn't sure if the email was online or the correct email or not. Essentially, what I want to bring up is, over the last 50 years, IT has become ridiculous in our offices. From how we operate our businesses to farming practices and using GPS to make sure farming is done appropriately. And I feel as though the county is falling behind because we're not bringing a cyber security department into the county. It's been highlighted over the last few weeks. We had Alquippa Water hit with a cyber attack. We had Washington County's court system hit by a cyber attack. It is only a matter of time. It's not an if, but a when, when Scoob County will be hit with a cyber attack. I am asking the county to be proactive. I know it's very difficult for government in general to be proactive, but to create a cyber security department and start looking at ways that the county can be secure. Right now, I don't, I don't feel confident that the county is keeping our data, the system's data secure in its practices. And I'm hoping you guys will do that. I know there is currently a memo being sent around in the House, the State House, for putting a cyber task force together. To my personal opinion, that is not enough. That is reactive. It is a knee jerk response. We're going to have a task force set up for when something happens instead of the counties putting the cyber security department together now, ensuring that we're doing the right practices. We can have policies such as a clean desk policy. We ensure that everyone's desks are clean so that there's not data laying around for just random people to find. That was my first comment. I'd like you guys to really look into that. That is my field. If you guys want to talk about that more, I'd be more than happy to discuss that. Secondly, on the personal action report this, you know, this week, there is an appointment for a MIS consultant on per DM basis of little more than $48 an hour. If you figure that out, that is if they tend to work 40 hours a week for whatever reason, that person will be getting paid almost $100,000 a year. Yet you're still looking for an MIS director paying no more than $82,000 a year. $82,000 is not a viable amount. I actually applied for the position to turn down the interview because that would have been an extreme pain cut from where I am. I'm not even, I'm not the manager where I work in the Security Department. You guys need to up, be paid for a director position in IT. It's the only way you're going to find a qualified candidate, and then you won't have to bring back Mr. Benulis, who I understand has worked, and previously worked for the county for almost 37 years.
That's your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
We usually get it at one second, so it doesn't go away.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Bayford. I live in the dumping grounds of waste in the west end of Scoob County township. Well, to start with, the gore system is supposedly finished and in operation, but we are still getting stench that permeates our homes. But according to our DEP, the stench is coming from the fields surrounding us. In my opinion, this is BS and is an excuse for agriculture exemption. I've read in our PA per agriculture that you can, you are allowed to land apply if unavoidable during winter seasons, because of the frozen ground and the snow. Well, they're land applying out there. Another thing, they say this is Class A bio solids. But yet, we were told at one of our township meetings from the manager of Natural Soil Products that when it leaves the gates, it's Class A, right? Okay, but why is it now being applied during winter months and then it's cut, the sludge is then covered with lime or copper? To me, that doesn't seem like, we were told from another DEP rep from Monroe County when he came to investigate the oversolone evening, that Class A bio solids should not stink like it was stinking. He said, this is, this is not right. You people shouldn't have to live like this. And he said that Class A bio solids should only smell like, like earth, like, you know, like have an earth stink. And he said Class A should also be mixed with lime and copper. Okay, so how could it be Class A bio solids coming out of the gate then? That, that to me just does not make sense. And another thing, I wanted to bring up, our, our homes are being devalued, our quality of life is being negatively impacted. We are overwhelmed by truck traffic. Now, since they have the gore system in place and in operation, now they want to put their tonnage, they want to increase their tonnage of sewage sludge brought in. Okay. Now, we shouldn't have to live, we shouldn't have to live like that. Not only that, we have enough, we're impacted by, overwhelmed by the truck traffic. So now we've got to deal with more truck traffic. Plus, not only that, a couple of weeks ago, I had to call NSP and tell them to come up and clean sewage sludge off the road that was, fell off their truck behind, you know, right in front of my home. I have pictures to prove it. I took pictures of it, and they did send somebody in. Actually, it was the manager they sent, sent up, Rich Relie, and he cleaned it up. I've got to say, he did a better job than the workers when they come to clean it off the road. And from my understanding, I heard users are supposed to meet with those facilities out there? Is that given in your future?
That's your three minute time.
Is there any other public comment?
My name is Laura Prisniewski. We think as the public of Pottsville, where the city hall has no trespassing signs and is locked down, and people need to be escorted out of the lobby to an office and then escorted out of the building after they conduct business. The fact of the matter is, people have a right under the Constitution of the United States and also the Constitution of Pennsylvania to have freedom of speech. The Constitution of the United States says that we don't have the right to breach freedom of speech. But of course, when you have lawyers looking at clocks to make sure that your speech gets enriched, you're guaranteed to have nothing to cause people to react to what's going on like that. Poor woman who's got to breathe unfit air. We are destroying our country, and we are allowing it to happen by these principles that we do not adhere to. In the city of Pottsville, we do cut and paste law. Even though our constitution says that there are not to be any ex post facto laws, we do that. And when we poorly educate people and we send them to governing schools, they don't know, they come out, they don't have a budget. They don't know what the law is. They don't know what the constitution is. But we say that everything is fine and we're resilient. I'm here to tell you, we are not resilient. This country is collapse. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, just to address some of the public comment. Jeff, I talked to Rudy about radios. I'm trying to figure out which ones, the 10 you're talking about. The only ones that have a police band right over are the sheriffs and adult probation. And our radio, we don't even, we gave our other radio, we have one now in the commissioner's office that stays here. And we have the other one, Rudy has both of the other ones. Gary and myself, they're in Boots. We don't have a radio. I don't want responsibility. So that's the only ones that I know that have the police.
Also on the badges, just your comment on those. Actually, they only, the people that do have them is only for business hours. They don't, unless it's an elected official or someone that, other than that, they don't have after hours. They come in after five or earlier than eight o'clock. So they don't have that access.
But they're general public. They're not county employees or anything. It's a general public person that's employed by a lawyer to do title searching.
They don't have full access. They can come in at night though.
Oh, but they can go in and out any door. They don't have to go through security. They can, it's a public safety issue for the employees and...
Our badge policy is being revised. We're working on that. It's not done yet, but it's being revised.
Just so you know, because you did make the statement just that it was, you know, anytime.
Right.
If those people don't have it anytime, there's no certain people that can permit.
My main issue is they're not employees of the county. Do you know what I mean? You guys know obviously that you're employees and who they are, where they're at. These are people that are coming in or employed by attorneys to do title searching. You guys have no idea who it is. That's my thing is, I think it should be just county employees that have that.
No, that's being looked at. The policy is being revised. It should be done shortly. It's going to be provided to the public. Wendy, yes, we are meeting with, the 22nd, Gary? The 22nd, we're meeting with Natural Spirits Products. And then we have meetings scheduled with three other companies.
Liberty Sword.
Liberty Sword, who's the...
Federal Cross.
The Cross, about the issue up there. And they, in my stance, it'd have to be for labor. And that's, that's it.
But I don't believe the fact that they know that users are coming now because...
No, they're coming here, they're coming here first.
Oh, they're coming here. Oh, okay.
And then, I have friends out in the west end of Valley that I asked to keep me posted on when it smells and everything. So I've been getting reports of other people that are friends of mine that I've asked to call me and tell me when there's an issue there, and maybe keep them along with that.
Good. Appreciate that.
Yes, so we are looking into it. And like I said, we're going to meet with them. Okay?
Thank you.
Gregory, as for the cybersecurity, we're working on that, and we have to bring one person back because we need his assistance with some things.
True.
Okay?
And also, just to keep you advised, we had the, I guess it was the National Guard Army that came in and did a whole program and did that. And I know Connor was a part of that to help on some of the big endpoints that they talked about. So it was done in the past. Naturally, I'm not the best on technology, but as every day turns, someone finds that they could do it in a cyber attack. I agree with that, what you're saying. We're keeping on top of that and looking at some things.
I agree. My biggest concern is if the county doesn't have a department focused on that, the county will fall behind. Because like I said, I've worked in cyber security for the last 14 years. And if I'm not doing continual education and continuing and working towards it, I will lose some of the skills and I will, I will fall behind. I feel as though the county is going to do that if they just continue to have an MIS department, which even that itself, the MIS department is an outdated term in IT fields. So it's, it's a very big concern that I have, that the county will fall behind and we will end up like Alquippa or Washington County and have a...
Okay. Okay, so, I'm trying to answer questions, but we have to move on to the... So a motion to approve the minutes from the commissioner's meeting of January 24th. So move. Second, one question?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Approval of the minutes from the commissioner's work session on February 7th. So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion for what the grant writers give us a review on at the workshop session? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion for what the mental health department and the mental services presented at the workshop? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion for what domestic relations presented at the workshop meeting? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve what the senior, office of senior services presented at the workshop meeting? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora, Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion for the Scoob County Transportation Authority that presented the workshop for the appointment, reappointment of Mike McCord, appointment of Mike Devlin to the Scoob County Transportation Authority? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the election bureaus that they presented at the workshop? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve what McCord's office presented at the workshop? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Human resources. Can I have a motion to approve, this is just, yeah. Can I have a motion for approval on the wellness committee approval? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion of administration for the Scoob County Transportation Authority to approve and authorize a limit to extend the term for one year beginning January 15th, 2024, to the agreement dated January 15th, 2013, between Scoob County Board of Commissioners and the Scoob County Transportation Authority? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Paul?
Commissioners, good morning. This morning, there are four budget adjustments that are listed on your agenda. Two are for the current year, two are for the prior year, and the four budget adjustments have been posted outside the boardroom for public review.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
New business, Gary.
Okay, the first item we should have is Lisa, Katia.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Karen.
I'm here this morning for the approval to enter in a lease purchase agreement with Montchump Trust Company for the lease purchase of a 2024 Ford, now it's printed wrong, F250, at the cost of $48,254.03 for Miracle Motors in Tamakwa, the lease is for 16 months. Also, I have approval to enter into a lease with purchase agreement with Montchump Trust Company for the lease and purchase of a combative diesel tractor with attachments at the cost of $25,820.50 from Redding Tractor and Equipment, the lease is for 16 months.
And the reason we're doing these on this meeting, we're doing this on the workshop at some times, I'm sensitive. They won't release the combative which we needed.
They were very anxious then.
Yeah. They'll release it, they'll have the option, so.
They laid the dollar short.
Yeah. So, so move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. On behalf of the engineering...
Yes.
You suck up.
In any event, I'm requesting a motion to advertise for bids to repairs to Penney Bridge 123 Broad Street of the Scoob River located in Port Flint and Borough. The bids will be received online via the Penn bid program by the Scoob County Controller until 9:00 AM on Wednesday, March 6th, and the bid results will be available on Penn bid following the commissioner's board meeting that day. And then a tentative bid award date will be March 13th, 2024.
Can I have a motion on the cap of that area? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On behalf of the grant writers, we had some grants, some stuff that had to be approved that was tied sensitive. Approval of the limit to the 2022 ESG program, budget to revise the program, budget follows. Straight outreach, it was a $2,965.46 of increase of $17,034.54. And emergency shelter, $117,034.54 of increase of $17,034.54. Approval to enter into the corporation agreement with the Servants of Law and Scoob Hope Center, AKA the Royal Crisis Center, to set duties and responsibilities for participating in the ESG 2023 program. Approval to submit a request for personnel RFP from a list of three qualified engineering firms, which respond to our request for qualifications. This is for engineering services for a competitive CBG port tree log township project. The RFP will be done March 6th, 2024, within the work date of March 13th, 2024. Can I have that motion? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Human resources.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. So we've got a couple of items here. Children and youth, the appointment of Juanita Schenkis as a county caseworker one, and the rate is 20.9412 effective 2/2024. And in MIS, the appointment of Dave Benulis as an MIS consultant per DM, rate is 48.2067 effective 2/2024. All appointments be pending drug tests or physical where appropriate, and all actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Can I have a motion for human resources? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
And there is one informational item. The sheriff's office, the appointment of Michael O'Toole, security guard per DM, effective 2/2024.
Can I have a motion on that? So move. Salary board, report of the executive session?
There were none held.
Any public comment for salary board? Can I have approval of the minutes from the January 24th, 2023 salary board meeting? So move. Second?
Excuse me, that should say 24, 2024. Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And Controller Yekenshaw?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of the salary board work session on February 7th, 2024? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yekenshaw?
Yes.
Human resources.
Yes, Commissioners, in MIS, we creating the position of the MIS consultant per DM effective 2/2024. And then to set salary for Dave Benulis in that position, rate is 48.2067 effective 2/2024. And in the sheriff's office, setting salary for Michael O'Toole as a security guard one per DM, rate is $15 an hour and effective 2/2024.
Can I have a motion with the resources presented? So move. Second?
Commissioner Dora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington? Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And Controller, you Kenchick?
Yes.
Can I have a motion over here?
So move.
Retirement board.
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office.
Oh, okay, he presented both at the same time?
The sheriff first.
Sheriff. Oh, okay. Okay, so to set the salary for Michael O'Toole for the sheriff's office, a fifteen dollar salary, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, you Kenchick?
Yes.
And Sheriff, Rudy.
Okay, now a motion over here.
So move.
Retirement board, report of any executive sessions now?
There were none held.
Any public comment for retirement board? Can I have a motion approved to January tenth, twenty twenty?
Four.
Four. Meeting?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, you Kenchick?
Yes.
And Treasurer, you?
Yes.
Controllers' report?
Good morning.
Good morning.
During the month of January twenty twenty-four, three members received retirements of five hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars with prorated payments of four thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars. Four members received refunds of four thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars. One member received a rollover of six thousand, six hundred eighty dollars. Three deceased retirees received prorated payments of eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. The market value of the retirement fund as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four was one hundred fifty-four million, four hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred ten dollars. The total market value of the retirement fund as of today, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, is one hundred fifty-four million, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, eighty-seven dollars. Also, Angela Kane has requested to vest her pension, and Jennifer Fuze and Ashley Brager have requested to buy back her prior pension services. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the controllers' report?
So move.
Second.
Uh, then Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington? Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller, you Kenchick?
Yes.
And Treasurer, you?
Yes.
Is there any new business for the retirement board? Can I have a motion over here?
So move. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Should we get our chocolates later then?
Listen, that's just about, I, I didn't leave my house.
All right.
A break. Listen, most of the January, you're not, we're not even.